Councilwoman Parry, will you please put Council Bill 24-0766 on the floor for final passage?
I move that Council Bill 0766 be placed upon final consideration and do pass.
Thank you, and that's been moved and seconded. The required public hearing for Council Bill 24-0766 is open. May we have the staff report?
Excellent. Good evening, council members. I am Dennis Regenick, a financial analyst with the Capital Planning and Programming Division for the Department of Finance here at the City and County of Denver. I am here to give the staff report for Council Bill 24-0766. This is the creation ordinance for the Ballpark Denver General Improvement District, the creation of the Ballpark Denver GID District Advisory Board, the appointment of the initial members of the District Advisory Board, and the approval of the 2024-2025 work plan and budget for the Ballpark Denver GID. Statutory notice of this public hearing has been provided by the proponents of the district pursuant to Part 6 of Article 31 of the Colorado revised statutes. Now, a variety of business owners, residents, and community organizations own property in the district. The property owners and electors have provided a petition being statutory requirements to create the General Improvement District, and the petition has been filed with the city clerk and is in conformity with state statutes. An original petition was filed with the city clerk under City Clerk filing number 2024-0064 on May 29, 2024, and a supplemental petition was filed with the city clerk under City Clerk filing number 2024-0064B on July 2, 2024. Statutes require a petition for creation to be signed by at least 30% or 200 electors, whichever is less. For the Ballpark Denver GID, a total of 2,711 electors are registered in the proposed district, and as of July 1, the GID proponents have gathered petitions from 225 electors representing 252 individual parcels or units, which exceeds the statutorily required minimum. The petitioners have decided on pursuing the creation of a GID as it provides a permanent entity and a consistent management structure to own, operate, and maintain public infrastructure elements and provide public services for the Ballpark Denver neighborhood. Now, the district will generally be bound by 20th Street to the southwest, Coors Field and the railroad tracks to the northwest, Broadway and parcels adjacent to the northeast, and the alley between California and Welton to the southeast. The boundaries of the GID overlap with the boundaries of four existing local maintenance districts. This includes the 20th Street Local Maintenance District, the Laramore Street Local Maintenance District, the 22nd/Park Avenue Local Maintenance District, and the Broadway Viaduct Local Maintenance District. Upon successful completion of the GID, it is expected that the GID will take over maintenance responsibilities for the public improvements located within each local maintenance district boundary, and the city will seek further dissolution of each of these local maintenance districts by city council. To fund its operations, the GID will impose a mill levy of up to five mills. Due to the timing of GID approval, the GID will be unable to impose a mill levy in 2025 and is instead expected to impose a rate in 2025 equivalent to the imposition of five mill levies. Subject to voter approval, it is expected that the GID would begin to impose its mill levy for collection in 2026. Additional 2025 revenue is anticipated to be received from the Colorado Rockies and tax-exempt property owners to support GID operations with contributions in lieu of property taxes. Local maintenance district reserve revenues, to the extent available, are also anticipated to be transferred to the GID upon local maintenance district dissolution. Assuming approval tonight, the district will seek elector authorization at a November 2024 special election to authorize the mill levy and other Tabor-related matters. It is estimated that the GID's revenue will generate approximately $1,300,000 beginning in 2025. The GID is anticipated to spend its funds on traditional GID expenses like maintenance, legal, management, insurance, and utilities. Certain proposed services of the GID, such as security services or community outreach services, will only be provided pursuant to a federal, sorry, to a future intergovernmental agreements, to future intergovernmental agreements with the city. The district will not be authorized to issue any debt unless and until it becomes, it comes back to city council for further approval. The services, facilities, and improvements to be provided by the GID are not intended to duplicate or replace the services, facilities, improvements provided by the City and County of Denver within the proposed district boundaries. The GID is being created to provide enhanced and otherwise unavailable services and improvements within its boundaries. Per state statute, the city council is the ex officio board member, sorry, Board of Directors for the Ballpark GID. However, the proposed ordinance also creates a district advisory board, which is delegated many of the day-to-day operations of the district. The advisory board will also recommend a district annual work plan and budgets for city council approval each year. Now, the initial advisory board shall consist of 11 members, nine of which are voting. The members of this advisory board will include at least one representative from an owner of commercial property in the Ballpark GID boundaries, at least one representative from a business owner in the Ballpark GID boundaries, at least one representative from an owner of residential property in the boundaries, at least one resident living within the boundaries, one representative from the Colorado Rockies Baseball Club, one representative from a social service provider operating in the Ballpark boundaries, GID boundaries, the executive director of the city's Department of Infrastructure and Transportation, or their designee, and the city council person representing the majority of the area of land within the Ballpark District, or their designated representative. Now, approval of this creation ordinance does not approve any specific development plan or change in zoning. City council approval this evening allows the creation of the new GID, the appointment of the district advisory board, the approval of the 2024-2025 work plan and budget, and allows a proposed district election by the proponents to be held in November. Based on the presented information, city staff recommends approval of the creation of the Ballpark Denver General Improvement District, the creation of the GID's advisory board, the appointment of the initial members of the district advisory board, and the approval of the GID's 2024-2025 work plan and budget. There are proponents of the proposed Ballpark Denver General Improvement District here to support and answer any questions regarding the GID as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have 12 individuals signed up to speak this evening. If you're here in person, after your name's called, please make your way up to the front bench. I'll read a couple names at a time so you know who's in queue. We will start with Anna Schmoll, then Candace Panetta, and Chris Payne. Anna, are you here? Come on in.
Good evening. My name is Anna Schmoll. I am a Regional Vice President with Block by Block, and I am here to answer any service questions, any service providing questions if we potentially work with the GID, the Ballpark GID, in the future. I oversee Colorado accounts, such as Colfax Avenue bid, as well as Boulder Downtown Partnership.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Yes.
We'll keep you in queue for questions. Candace Panetta, and then Chris Payne.
Hi, everyone. Candace Panetta, owner of Mexico City Restaurant and Lounge that has been in this community for over 65 years. My husband and I are third generation. I currently serve on the Ballpark RNO and will also serve on the General Improvement District. The challenges that we face today are both really simple, but also really complex. We want to keep our community safe, clean, and fun for our patrons, for our employees, and for, of course, the wonderful residents of Ballpark. This GID is vital to our community, to fill in the gaps where the city cannot. The complex part is that the GID will not fix the mental health and the addiction crisis, but we're eager to employ a team similar to Block by Block, Dream Center, who also serves in our community. But we will, you know, we'll employ them to help handle these difficult situations and also help lead people to the right services. I mean, our district has the most social service centers in one district than I think in this entire state. So it's a community effort. 7,000 residents, over 200 businesses. The GID will allow us to do the things our community needs. Again, lighting in dark corners, power washing of sidewalks, trash pickup, beautification. We all deserve to live and do business in communities we feel safe in. We've got some amazing businesses in our district. We put on some of the biggest festivals in the city of Denver, not to mention the Colorado Rockies, which is one of the best ways to spend an evening in Denver. So thank you for your time. I'm excited. I'm excited to continue to serve this community and implement all the great things we've been working on. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, our next speaker is Chris Payne, followed by Stevenson Farnsworth.
Good evening, council members, and thank you for the opportunity to be here this afternoon. It's very nice to listen to everyone's powerful stories and the stakeholders that have all come together to represent the Ballpark District. For your reference, there's been several groups that have, that have sided with the Ballpark Improvement District, notably Visit Denver, Downtown Partnership, the Metro of Denver EDC, the Chamber of Commerce, and several other groups, including the Colorado Rockies. Property owners, business owners, and residents have recognized the positive impact of existing improvement districts, such as the Downtown River Partnership, Cherry Creek North, and Rhino, and we've organized a coalition to form a similar improvement district for Ballpark. Over the past few years, I've been fortunate to learn from several of the wonderful stakeholders that are here tonight. They've, I've grown to admire them for their authentic DNA. They're all inspiring and are committed to being part of the long-term solution for what many believe to be an under-invested part of downtown Denver. Ultimately, this neighborhood can create a more connected, walkable, and clean and safe bridge between downtown and Rhino and the surrounding neighborhoods, making downtown Denver even more attractive to businesses that want to invest here. There are also significant opportunities for much-needed housing developments, notably affordable housing, which are challenging to capitalize without a neighborhood vision. Additionally, this initiative has the potential to build lasting partnerships between all community stakeholders in a way that has never been achieved before. And while we all fully recognize the positive impact the city has had over the past one to two years in Ballpark, the reality is that it's technically unincorporated from a district mill levy perspective, and thus there should be thoughtful attention to its bespoke needs moving forward. We cannot afford to make incremental progress only for momentum to take a step back. When city funding or leadership changes, there needs to be a long-term answer and hope that drives real and unwavering advancement. The primary objectives of the GID are creating a collective voice for the neighborhood, supporting community members, strengthening the local economy, providing a comprehensive maintenance plan, and defining and establishing a sense of place, a sense of place in a neighborhood that doesn't currently exist. Again, thank you for your time. We hope that you vote in favor of this. It's not just a win for Ballpark, but a win for all of downtown and the surrounding neighborhoods. I live in District 6. My wife works at Children's Hospital Colorado near District 8. My first tax-paying job was at I-25 and, and Colorado, also in District 6. I spend five days a week downtown working in District 10, and I'm really excited for the potential in the future for, for the fine District 9. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is, sorry, Stevenson Farnsworth, followed by Patrick McMichael.
Hello. My name is Stevenson Farnsworth. I moved to Denver in 2009. I've called Ballpark home since then, and I'm so excited to be standing here in front of you all, so thank you for this opportunity. I have been a member of the Ballpark Collective RNO. I've been the treasurer of the Broadway Viaduct Maintenance District since 2019. Been involved with the GID effort for about a year now, and it's amazing for us to be at this, this place. There's been a lot of thoughtful work that has gone into this for residents like myself, for business owners, as well as those who call our neighborhood home. And it's very important that this moves forward, and we'd love to have your support. And I'll probably also be answering questions if you guys have them, so, thanks so much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Patrick McMichael, followed by Matthew Van Systeen.
Good evening. I'm Patrick McMichael. Thanks for the time tonight. I'm, I'm on the Ballpark Collective RNO Board. I'm on the, one of the four local maintenance district boards that will be dissolved if this is, if this is passed. I'm a property owner for eight years, small business owner in the, in the Ballpark District, and I live in the Ballpark District. And I think what I'm most interested in is the safety and security aspect of what this GID is gonna accomplish and provide our neighborhood. It's a pretty unique situation when you live and work within a two-block radius of each other, and it's also a unique situation when, every morning when I walk down the stairs at my place and get ready to open the door and walk out onto the sidewalk to make my one-block commute, I pretty much am guaranteed that I will have some sort of either verbal conflict or it can very easily lead to physical conflict. And we need, we need more safety and security in the Ballpark District. The, the DPD does a great job, and, and they have a good presence, but I think this GID will offer an opportunity to really increase the, the presence in our neighborhood, where I don't have to peek around the corner when I'm going to work and wonder what I'm gonna run into, whether it's a group of, of homeless folks who are creating a huge pile of trash that I, I have to deal with, or one of my neighboring businesses have to deal with, or whether it's a drug dealer that's happening in the back alley behind my office. You know, I could choose to keep my head down and not interact and not engage with these activities, but as part of this community, I, I can't do that, which often leads to conflict. So, any, any assistance that I can get personally as a business owner and a resident from the GID, I would, I would welcome greatly. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Matthew Van Systeen, followed by Lisa Franz.
Hello. On a personal note, I wanted to share that it's a very exciting day. I got an email just before I came that my Casa Bonita tickets have come up, and I've got 10 available tickets, so. My name is Matt Van Systeen. I moved to Colorado from Wisconsin in 2005. I've lived near 21st and Laramore since spring 2008. I'm a residence, resident business owner, property owner, and I'm the board chair of the Ballpark Collective Neighborhood Association. When I moved downtown, it was during a boom for Denver, and I saw unrealized opportunities. I knew the challenges of the area, having the highest density of social services. I could see it was a concrete jungle with many surface lots, dead trees, and no parks or public space. I knew the area's seedy reputation with high crime, cheap bars, drunkenness, drug use, and prostitution, but I moved in anyway. At the time, the area was in upswing with apartment complexes being built. The Rockies had just come off their 2007 Rocktober season, and it felt like things were happening. And then the greedy banker crash of 2008 hit, and the neighborhood flatlined. We endure rat infestations, trash litter, human waste, dead and missing trees with open pits, shootings, dawn of the dead, zombie apocalypse, level drug use, and everyone, including me, where is, wondering where is the city? In 2012, I started to participate in Ballpark Neighborhood Association meetings, but unfortunately, the meetings were generally contentious and forums preventing frustrations with no actionable solutions. That RNO disbanded in 2015, and in late 2016, a group formed to study a special district as a tool to help address these issues. We realized we're in a donut hole of other areas with special districts, and Ballpark Collective began to study special district formation. In 2017, we worked with the city to create a pop-up park, a solution for the lack of public space. 2018 and 19, we started to host community events. Development was happening again. New businesses were moving in, and we were on another upswing. In February 2020, we hosted a community meeting with over 60 stakeholders, ready to undertake the process of creating a district, and then we all know what happened. Conditions became worse than ever. Small businesses shuttered, development stopped, and urban decay against, urban decay again set in. I, like many others, considered leaving the city. Today is a big day for Ballpark Collective and Denver's proposed Ballpark District. We stand before you, ready to do our part to create a solution for challenges in our community. This group is truly representative of the area with voices from the Rockies, social service providers, faith community, residents, and business owners. This compassionate, tenacious, resilient, slightly crazy, and extremely fun crew is doing what we can make, what we can to make life better for everyone in our little corner of the world. We invite all members to vote yes on the Ballpark GID and join us to realize the full potential of our community and the city.
Thank you. That's your time. Thank you. Our next speaker is Lisa Franz, followed by Marty Page.
Thank you. My name is Lisa Franz, and I have the privilege of serving as co-chair for Business Collaboration for the Ballpark Collective RNO. I'm also the owner of Frank's Gentleman Salon at 2111 Laramore, a business that I've operated in the Ballpark neighborhood for the past eight years. In my role as co-chair, I have the unique opportunity to spend time with many fellow business owners and staff in the neighborhood. The Ballpark District stands out in Denver as a community driven by individuals who have invested substantial time and effort into its growth and improvement. We are a tenacious and resilient group, coming together daily to support and enhance our neighborhood. The spirit and dedication community, the spirit and dedication of this community is why I chose Ballpark to, for my location of the business. Unlike many areas dominated by chain establishments, Ballpark is filled with independently-owned businesses, each facing unique challenges. We navigate the daily realities of homelessness, drug markets, trash, and overall safety concerns. These are not easy issues, but they are a part of our daily reality. At Frank's, we often serve, as barber shops tend to do, as a community hub, where there's a lot of crosstalking and conversation about community. And they occur every hour, these conversations, and they're reflecting the shared experiences and camaraderie among the residents and other business owners. And through my interactions with other business owners, I hear constantly about the collective desire for positive change in our neighborhood. Safety is a significant concern for us. It's not only about the well-being of my clients and business owners, but the safety of my staff. Recruiting team members to join us in the Ballpark neighborhood is becoming increasingly difficult due to these safety issues. We can't overlook the fact that safety is paramount to the prosperity of our businesses and the well-being of everybody who lives and works down there. So I'm just asking everyone to vote yes on this, and to echo what Matt said, that we are a tenacious, scrappy, grassroots bunch of people. You won't find chains in this neighborhood. It is business owners and residents who have come together to make this happen today. Thank you.
Followed by Chris Raydell.
Hi, my name is Marty Page, and I own two buildings in the Ballpark District. The first is the building that has the Pat Milbury mural that says, it's the big heart, and it says, "Love this city." And that is the ethos of what we are trying to do here. We do love this city. The building, the second building is adjacent to it. It's an event venue called Asterisk, and the event venue hosts events with up to 1,000 different guests. And part of why I'm passionate about this GID effort is because we are losing business at this venue that is going outside Denver, and it is going outside the state, because people come into the neighborhood and have a perception of crime and safety challenges because of a lot of the trash and a lot of the mental health. And so, part of the reason I am so supportive and on the steering committee for the GID is because I want to stop losing business that Denver needs to Salt Lake City and Texas and other states. I want to see these big venues, which are, or big events, which are economic drivers that benefit all of the small businesses and community. I want to keep them in Denver and in Ballpark, and I believe that this GID effort will help accommodate that. One thing that I've been most excited about in our efforts that have, to date, is that we have truly been collaborative, and it's not just the business owners, just the residents. Everyone has been truly collaborative. We've, we've met together and organized and really come to the table with all the social service providers. We've met with nearly every one of them. And so I think we now have kind of a consensus, and just, it's created a framework for the entire community, really collaborating and, you know, focusing on progress. And I think that will continue to happen, and that is why I urge you guys to vote yes on this, on this effort. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chris, Chris Raydell signed up via Zoom, but I don't see them there. Are you in the room? Okay, we'll move on to the next name. Kevin Kahn, then Megan Shay.
My name is Kevin Kahn. I'm with the Colorado Rockies down at Coors Field, 2001 Blake Street. I've had the privilege of serving as the Chief Customer Officer and Vice President of Ballpark Operations. I've been with the Rockies for 30 years, beginning with the second year at Mile High Stadium. Over that time, I, along with many others in our organization, have worked with neighborhood organizations throughout the city, specifically for this conversation, the Ballpark Neighborhood, in areas of safety, security, events, and operations. And we are very excited to be a part of this GID application area and process. This is the third time that the neighborhood has explored this, and I can tell you without a doubt that this effort has been the most comprehensive and the most inclusive effort to date, and, and we're hoping that the third time is definitely the charm. It's extremely important for the Rockies that the area be safe, be secure, be clean, and have a sense of family friendliness, and we strongly believe that the GID will help in that endeavor. I'd like to take a quick second to say thank you to the Ballpark Collective RNO and all involved in this GID process for all the hard work and all the communication through this process, and I'd like to thank council for allowing me to speak tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Megan Shay is joining us via Zoom. Go ahead, Megan.
I'm honored to be a part of this effort. I am the executive director of Step Denver, and we are a residential men's addiction recovery program located on Laramore Street between 20th and 20th, excuse me, and 21st. So we are in the heart of where the needs are, where the services are for individuals, but I'm really here representing the men who call Step Denver home. We have hundreds of men every year who call this home for anywhere from four to six months at a time, and it is vital that they feel safe in their neighborhood, that they can rebuild their lives, they can go out into the workforce with the support of our career center, and, and rebuild their self-sufficiency and, and self-esteem and feeling of dignity, and know that they have something to contribute to this community. And so, you know, when we face things like shootings, last year we had to put bulletproof glass in the front of our building to make sure that our residents and staff were safe because of shootings that were happening in front of our building. I had a resident who was not even five days into the program, sharing with me that he couldn't get two doors down from us to go to the corner store without being offered blues. And so for men who are working so hard to overcome addiction and homelessness, it is vital that they are safe in their community, that they can walk down the street and not face those, those very risky circumstances that they're working so hard to exit. And so for us, this is, this is about them, and having a sense of place and, and really enjoying this community. It is a beautiful neighborhood. There's so much potential here, so much, you know, vibrancy when it comes to the small businesses and residents who are engaged, but we do struggle with the homelessness, with the drug dealing and things that are going on. And so, having that presence, having individuals who can be on the street, connecting those who need services to the beds that are so readily available, is really important to us as well. We see this as a way of us reaching more people who need our help. There is never a time that we have a waiting list. We always have beds, no cost to enter, same-day admission for anyone who's ready and willing. And we really struggle to reach individuals who are on the street and let them know that this opportunity is here for them. So we see that as one of the benefits, but ultimately, we're here as part of this effort to ensure that the men who call this place home can feel proud and safe walking through our doors. Thank you all for your support.
Very much. Our next speaker is Janelle Jay, followed by Jamie Gillis.
Very much. Our next speaker is Janelle Jay, followed by Jamie Gillis.
I currently reside in the Ballpark District. I also work down there. I work and volunteer with the Ballpark Collective RNO. I have, for the last 20 years, worked, played, and lived in the Ballpark area. It is my home. I love this city. I have seen the ebbs and flows of the neighborhood, where I feel safe walking at all times of day and night, and the times where I don't. I've seen the times where it goes from one block to the next, where the block that was safe one week is not the next week. This JID brings a lot of safety and security to our neighborhood. It also will help with the cleaning. There are things that we do as neighbors, as business owners, as staff that work down there, that we shouldn't have to do. Trash, broken bottles in the bike lanes, cleaning up feces. These are things that we shouldn't have to deal with on a daily basis, and we do. I love my neighborhood. I love my community. My family goes back five generations that we've called Colorado Home. So Colorado is very important to me. They come from a small town. I've always said I'm a small-town or a downtown person. To me, the pockets of downtown are like a small town. I look over here, I can walk two blocks down the street, and I run into somebody I know, whether it's somebody that I saw at a bar the night before, whether it's somebody that I've worked with previously, somebody that I went to a Rockies game with, or saw at a music festival or something. Like, there are all those things. We have a community down there, and we all support and care for each other. I've seen a lot of these business owners put in way more effort and time than most business owners would to their community. They all have a lot on their hands of running their own business, and yet they've put time and effort into the community that I live in, and I appreciate that from trees. A few people here have planted trees and watered trees beyond their front of their business, and I get to benefit from that. Walking into work the other day, just hearing the birds. There are times in downtown Denver you could not hear that because there were not trees. These business owners, us as residents, we need the support of the funds to keep this consistent in our neighborhoods. Yes, the House 1000 has helped, but I have been working with one friend I care much about who is unhoused, trying to get him support and help. People in here have, other people who are not here have helped him. And he is still living in an alley down there. We need support in navigating the people who are unhoused to the correct services that they need. These services are down there, but the access to them, and even sometimes our knowledge of who does what is not there.
That's your time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our last speaker is Jamie Gillis.
Good evening, members of council. My name is Jamie Gillis. I have a company called Sensho Inc. I have been hired by the proponents of the Ballpark JID to help guide them through the special district formation process. I just wanted to add that it has been a pleasure and an honor to work with such a committed group of individuals. I've been doing special districts for 23 years. I don't think I've ever seen such a collaborative process as this, and a complex process, bringing together property owners, business owners, residents, social service agencies, the Rockies, all really working in lockstep to come together with a plan that everybody agreed on, that everybody agree is needed, and then doing the work themselves to make it happen. So I'm just here tonight to answer questions on the business plan, or the operating plan, the work plan for the JID, on the petitioning process, or anything that has to do with really the statutory or formation process. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. That concludes our speakers. Are there questions from members of council on Bill 24-766? Councilwoman Lewis.
Thank you. I actually just have a few questions, and they're not mine. Members of council received a letter from the Colorado Coalition for the Homeless, one of the service providers that you all mentioned in your testimony. And so, I just wanted to see if you all could answer some of the questions or concerns that came directly from that service provider. The first one is regarding the already overwhelming homelessness response system, and the concern about safety and security, navigation of community ambassadors, and essentially, they're curious if the additional $750,000 will include a full-time, dedicated homeless outreach, outreach staff, because they believe that's what is actually needed in that area.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lewis. I can speak to that letter. Yes, the Colorado Coalition for the Homeless sent a letter to all of council, as well as to us today, stating their support for the initiative, and also laying out some questions they had that they want to be sure are addressed through the process.
Yeah.
The Coalition has been involved in meetings with us about the formation, and I responded back to them with the information that before the GID once formed can deliver any of those services on the ground relating to safety, security, homeless outreach, and navigation, we have to go through a separate process to create an intergovernmental agreement with the city that will detail out exactly what those services can provide. So we actually won't be allowed to start providing them until the city is agreeable to how that's going to be delivered. I let the Coalition know that. I, I asked Kathy Alderman to please be at the table for those discussions, because they are far more intimately aware of some of the day-to-day challenges.
Yeah.
She was excited. She wasn't aware there was a separate process, and she was thrilled and said, "Sign us up to help."
Thank you, Jamie. I appreciate that. The second, you might want to stay up here. The second question, and you're aware of this, since you received the same letter, is given that the JID will focus, or function as an independent entity with its own executive director, they'd really like to understand more about the plans for collaboration, resource allocation, and support for emergency services such as cold and warm weather support. Clear communication on these would, would be very helpful for them as well.
Yeah. And, and we shared back that I think that's all part of this agreement as to how this is all going to work. In the, we also shared a packet earlier today, and you can see on our website, we've received letters from the St. Francis Center, from Step Denver, from the Denver Rescue Mission, from the Coalition, we're waiting one from the Salvation Army. Everybody is at the table and ready to start coordinating and figuring out how to, how to put together the service plan. I think even within the service providers, I don't want to speak for them, but at the meetings we've had, they have expressed excitement that there's maybe finally a central, centralized way to put together a coordinated strategy that starts at Ballpark. So all of that, again, will happen very transparently with the city, and will be outlined in an intergovernmental that will dictate exactly how the JID operations will go.
Thank you. The third question that they have here is regarding the Department of, the Denver Department of Public Health and Environment, regarding cleaning efforts. They are curious as to, like, when we start talking about our unhoused, excuse me, Jamie, that, that when we start thinking about sweeps or cleanups, that you all would do so in a way that honors the dignity of folks that are living on our streets unsheltered, as well as you all are transparent about that process. Have you all considered that, how you might handle that, and how you might work in collaboration with some of the service providers who do a great job?
Yep, absolutely. And we've had some preliminary discussions with the city, and I know that city staff is not, not concerned, but definitely wants that to be detailed out. This, as a district, this, this service delivery team isn't going to be in the business of doing large-scale sweeping and things like that. I think more than anything, what we see the, the outreach and ambassador and navigator team doing, and the public safety team, is hopefully proactively working with these folks. The city's done a great job really making an impact on, on so many of the encampments in the area, and the goal now is to ensure that, as opposed to those getting big or dangerous, or creating even situations for those within the encampments that are not safe, that we're proactively working with people to get them to services or get them assistance. So, very much, again, will be dictated by the IGA, and the city will get to set the parameters of how that will work.
Great, thank you. Final one is, they want to provide some clarification on how landscaping and cleaning resources will be allocated through the JID.
Yeah, and that was probably when we have to have a further discussion on what their specific question is. I think the question in the letter was in relation to, it sounds like they may pay some sort of something to the city already to do some of those services. Maybe they're speaking about it being through the, one of the LMDs that's going away, but...
If you want, I'm happy to...
What's that?
If you want, I can provide you the clarification if it's helpful for you.
Yeah, that's great.
So specifically, will payments in lieu of taxes, the pilot, P-I-L-O-T, by tax-exent organizations like the Coalition influence this allocation, understanding that this will help ensure that resources are distributed equitably and do not inadvertently disadvantage certain areas within the district? Just a clarifying question.
Yeah. So, again, sort of, the, the question is, if we ask them to make a payment in lieu of taxes to the district, will that, will they be able to influence how that pilot is utilized? And we've had a discussion with them in, in the early days with all the service providers, that there may be some sort of agreement or contract for service that may not be called a payment in lieu of taxes, that they may actually contribute financially for specific services that benefit their area in a certain way. So that's all on the table for discussion, and will be an independent sort of contract that will be created between the entity agreeing to pay the JID for services and the JID itself.
Great. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Watson.
Jamie, just one quick question, and I think I should just stay there, because you're going to keep getting questions. So, so one question. Can you share with the work that you've done with other JIDs, the work that you, we know there's still the intergovernmental agreement that we have to do to kind of clearly describe what the outcomes are going to be for the JID? Can you provide, just for folks listening, what types of support does a general improvement district provide for communities that currently have it? So folks can be visualized what this general improvement district could, based on the agreement that we come up with, provide for Ballpark?
Sure. I think the two most notable and probably, folks, people have experience going there, JIDs that exist, are the Rhino General Improvement District, which covers the west side of Rhino, along the Brighton Boulevard corridor, over to the river, and over to the railroad tracks, and then the 14th Street General Improvement District. Those districts primarily have funded infrastructure improvements, maintenance, cleaning, safety investments. So when you look at Rhino GID, for example, Rhino was, the GID was a financial contributor to the beautification enhancements along the Brighton Boulevard rebuild. They helped build the Rhino Park. They helped contribute to the Rhino Riverfront Promenade. They're doing lighting. They're doing cleaning, trash cans, just safety investments throughout the area. So I think if you look at that west side of Rhino, that's really the influence of the General Improvement District. The change that has happened over the last 10 years has been extraordinary. And similar on 14th Street, the GID was a funder of all the enhancements and maintenance, and ongoing care of that area to make it a vibrant corridor. So you'll see a lot of those improvements, and then I think you'll also see a little bit of some of the services that Downtown Denver Partnership has provided over the years, which is an ambassador team that's visual, visible out on the ground, you know, sort of serving as ambassadors and hospitality within the community, but also ensuring that there's eyes and ears on the street all the time to, to really have this proactive point of view of how you keep a neighborhood safe and welcoming for everybody.
Thank you, Jamie. No other questions, Madam President.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Jamie. That's all we have in queue. Seeing no one else in queue, the public hearing is closed. Comments by members of council on Council Bill 24-0766? Councilwoman Watson?
Thank you, Madam President. I am very excited about the opportunity that a general improvement district will provide, not just for Ballpark, but I would say really the connectivity of downtown, and connection, connection to the other neighborhoods within District 9, from Five Points to the R District, to and through Whittier where I live. I want to applaud the folks who are not only here tonight, but the many, many years of work. As you've heard, this is a third try for this general improvement district. This is not something that folks just began the work on, but this group of folks really being intentional of engaging all members of the Ballpark Neighborhood, including the service providers, who actually were some of the first neighbors in Ballpark, to make sure that their voices are not only heard, but to make sure that they are included in the process, and that it will be continued to be included in that process. I think that is equity at, at the basis of making sure that we provide an opportunity for all voices to be at the table. I want to applaud the steering of this process, Jamie Gillis. This was not easy, and I remember the first time we met to speak on this process. I saw the great opportunity, but there was a large distance between that first meeting and the outcome that we've come to tonight for this vote. So I want to thank you for your stewardship, your strong leadership, and your willingness to listen, especially to those who may have initially not been as supportive, and bring them along. I say to my fellow council members, the Ballpark Neighborhood is one part of District 9 that has, for decades, been the sole leaders and supporters of the majority of service providers throughout this city. They have, as small businesses, all independently owned, small businesses excluding the Rockies, they have, without question, without complaint, have led the process to ensure that those who need the greatest need, have the greatest needs, that they were met. And they did it, and they do it on a daily basis. I know many of them, and I am proud to stand with them tonight in support of this general improvement district. This is a small step. Lots of more work to be done, but this is a great big step for this neighborhood, and I can see the emotion, feel the emotion in many of you, because I know the decades-long work that you've done. So, congratulations for the work you've done so far. We haven't voted yet, but thank you so much for all that you do, and the ways you're willing to put yourself, your family, your businesses, and your community first. I ask the other members of council to join me in support of the Ballpark General Improvement District.
Thank you. Councilwoman Alvidres.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to also commend the work that it takes. In my district, on Broadway, we're trying to do the same, and we're not at this point, but I hope that we will be soon. I think that when I look at the small businesses on Broadway in my district, it breaks my heart. It feels like someone punches me in the stomach every time I get a text that their building was lit on fire last night, or I get a video of someone ramming a piece of wood into the door and chasing their employees. And that's a daily thing, so I feel your pain, and I know how hard it is. And I really commend the small businesses in Denver, from Ballpark, from Broadway, that are willing to do the work to get here, because you're volunteering to pay more money on top of all of the commercial property tax and all the taxes you already pay to help make your community better. So I want to commend your generosity in being willing to invest in yourselves in this way. I really admire that. I wish that more businesses understood how important it is to invest in your business. And in addition to that, just the hard work that it took to get here, because I'm hoping that we will also be here soon, and it's also been many years in the making. So thank you for being willing to give to your community in this way, and thank you for all the work that it took to get you to this point. Thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Councilwoman Parity.
Yeah, hi. I am a yes vote on the formation of the JID tonight, but I do want to take the opportunity to comment that we've, we overrely on these small tax districts because of our general sort of tax-improvised environment and the impacts of labor. And part of what that results in is that when we have these small districts governed by boards, and they start getting into the business of providing services like security or homeless outreach, we as council have less oversight of that. And in general, I would call that less public oversight from, you know, voters, because we're, of course, subject to the electorate. And so, it's an overarching concern that I have, certainly not specific to Ballpark. You know, I think that area of the city has every much as right to come together and form a JID as any other part of the city, but I, I will continue to be looking for ways to make sure that, especially when it comes out to contracting security services, that we're making sure that people in those jobs are trained and overseen adequately. Same concerns I have with downtown and other parts of the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing no one else in queue, Madam Secretary, roll call, please, on Council Bill 24-0766.
Alvidres.
Aye.
Flynn.
Aye.
Gilmore.
Aye.
Gonzalez Gutierrez.
Aye.
Hines.
Aye.
Cashman.
Louis.
Parity.
Aye.
Humero Campbell.
Aye.
Sandoval.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Aye.
Madam President.
Aye. Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results.
One nay, 12 ayes.
12 ayes. Council Bill 24-0766 has passed. Thank you all so much. Let me give you a little bit of time to transition out, because I know we'll have more people coming in before we put the item on the floor.